Good evening, Littleton. It's July 11th, 2022. This is the Select Board meeting. We will begin tonight in executive session. It's scheduled to run from 6:00 to 6:30. And then we will return to open session. And if you have a motion handy, Mr. Clerk?
Move the Select Board vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Littleton and Littleton Professional Firefighters Association.
Is that it?
Move the Select Board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to master in law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and reconvene in open session.
Second. Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, is it a roll call vote? I'm sorry, Mr. Ronbacher.
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Lappley.
Aye.
Chair is in favor. It passes five to zero. Thank you very much. We'll see you in about 30 minutes. Good evening, Littleton. We're back from executive session in open session for the rest of the night, July 11th, 2022. We will begin tonight, as we usually do, with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Clerk, can you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will go over the agenda very briefly. We have a, some mail to read, a proclamation to read. We are going to, I believe, take out of order item 8B, which is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with the fire union. Following that, we'll have department updates, police officer reserve appointments, acceptance of a donation from Ed Weeney, as is traditional every week, acceptance of a donation for the library, and the town clerk will update us on the Votes Act of Massachusetts. Public input follows that. After that, we'll have two appointments to the Agricultural Commission and the Finance Committee, a joint meeting with the Sustainability Committee, and then we will have an update about the Nagog Hill Orchard and a discussion of the Select Board assignments to other committees, followed by audited financial statements from our federal money, and finally, a discussion of a potential approval for a host community agreement for a marijuana product manufacturer. And then we'll have minutes, and then we will adjourn at exactly 8:20 PM, as we usually do. So, what are you, the interim assistant, assistant town administrator tonight? What should I call you?
Acting.
Acting town administrator.
Temporarily acting.
Do you have any mail that you would like to read for us?
Yes, I do. So first, Anthony asked that I review the current town board openings, just to put it on people's radar and pique some people's interests, hopefully. So, the Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee has two openings. The Master Plan Implementation Committee has one opening. The Sustainability Committee has three openings. The Taxation Aid Committee has one opening, and the Zoning Board of Appeals has an opening for one alternate.
I believe we're, the Sustainability Committee, our discussion is about the size of that committee, so it might not have three openings after our meeting tonight. But it might. Is that all?
That is it for the mail.
Next, we are going to read a proclamation. As you know, I made the joke that Ed Zweeny's, it's traditional. However, it does seem like he has given a tremendous amount of money and financial support to a variety of, you know, worthwhile causes in Littleton, and we just wanted to read this proclamation to thank Ed Howard for that, of his nonstop support. "The Littleton Select Board recognizes Ed Howard on behalf of the people of Littleton. The Select Board extends their deepest appreciation and thanks for his generous donations to the Littleton community this 11th day of July 2022," signed by all the members of the Littleton Select Board. So, Ed, if you're watching, thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes?
I do think Ed was hoping to attend tonight, but I have not heard.
Okay, thank you. And if no one objects, I'd like to go to the fire. What's that? Oh, sorry.
Steve Marx is here, and he would like to say a few words about Mr. Howard.
Great.
Oh, great.
Oh, please.
Fantastic.
Please go up there and announce your name, if you wouldn't mind, and your address.
Hi, so I'm Steve Mark. I'm the school business manager. For those people who don't know me. Ed Howard and Ed Zweeny's has been a partner with the Littleton School since 2007. Over that 14th period, Ed has donated over $18,000 to the school libraries. And on behalf of the school committee, the superintendent, who unfortunately couldn't be here, myself, and the students of Littleton, we would like to formally thank Ed for all of his years of partnering with Littleton on behalf of the students.
They're here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Are we ready to go on now? So can we go to the, I think it was 8B? So that we can.
Out of order.
Yep. Not have to ask Mr. O'Connor to wait around.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
There it is. So we discussed this in executive session, and I believe that we are ready to discuss in an open session the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Littleton and our Professional Firefighters Association. Does anyone want to speak publicly about this before we go to a motion? Did we cover it already?
I think we did.
Okay.
Just to thank you, Chief, for coming in your leadership. And if they're watching, you know, thanks to the union members that participated. It was a long process. And Chuck, I know you and Anthony, the attorneys, everybody else. It was a long, 18 months, I think, close to negotiation. So, thank you for your hard work.
Yours as well, Gary. Don't be so humble.
Okay.
I have a motion. Move the Select Board vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Littleton and the Littleton Professional Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters Local 4599 for a period covering July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor, very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Back, back on track. Police Department Reserve Appointments is the next item. Chief Patterson.
Mr. Chair, Select Board members. Chief Pannard unfortunately had a meeting to go to tonight and was unable to attend. I'm here to present three candidates for you for a reserve position. As you know, with the Mass laws changing, it made it difficult for us to keep our reserve officers on, so we let most of them go. We're only hiring ones that are retired and have full-time police academy certifications or have attended the bridge academy that the state has put through. So at this time, we're going to present James Ferrara. He actually used to work for us as a reserve officer, but did not have the bridge academy. He works full-time for the Middlesex Sheriff's Department, and they were nice enough to put him through the bridge academy. So he's completed that, and we'd like to bring him back on with us. And then nextly is Warren O'Brien. Warren O'Brien was a lieutenant with Boxborough, recently retired. He also formerly worked for Littleton back in the '90s. So he's kind of coming back to end the rest of his career as a reserve here and work with us, do some details. And lastly is Danielle Nicolo. Danielle is working for Boston University Police Department, full-time police officer. So she's got a lot of experience there, and she'll be coming here as a reserve officer as well.
Great.
So I don't know if you want to have them come up one by one, or if you have any questions.
If you wouldn't mind coming up and just saying a couple sentences, I'd like to hear from you just about who you are and.
Good evening. Jim Ferrera, as Debbie said, I've worked with Littleton as a reserve for a couple of years with the post coming in. And I'm a full-time sheriff, Middlesex Sheriff's Department. They were kind enough to put me through the post. I just wrapped up the post this past June, completed all the classes, and in good standing with them. So I reached out to the chief and see if I was still eligible to come back, and he was nice enough to offer permission.
Thank you.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi.
Warren O'Brien. I just retired from the Boxborough Police Department where I was a lieutenant. After 38 years of full-time police work, I thought it was time to maybe take a break. But in any event, I worked here in the '90s, back in, for seven years back in the '90s. Town has changed a lot since then, but I live locally in Acton, so I'm familiar with the area. And it's good to be here. He's got a good team running the department here, and it's good to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yael Nicolo. I am a full-time police officer with the Boston University Police Department. I have been with them for 12 years as a full-time police officer, for eight years now. I love the community of Littleton. I love everything that you guys put out. What drew me to the department was the police department itself. The deputy chief and the chief have been phenomenal, and I see the growth of the department, where it's going, and I appreciate it, and hopefully continue to be a part of it and see where it goes.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any comments from the board? Or ready for motion?
Appreciate these folks coming forward for all they do.
Okay.
Move the Select Board vote to appoint Mr. James Ferrera, Ms. Danielle Nicolo, sorry if I missed them. And Mr. Warren O'Brien as reserve police officers.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Thanks very much. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi.
Nicolo.
Pulled you back.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All righty. Oh, sure. Want to get up?
All right.
We're going to come around? Yeah.
I'll stand behind them, maybe.
No, that's all right.
These new recruits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Acceptance of a donation from Ed Zweeny's. Are you going to take this one, Liz?
Double duty, yes. So like you said, as customary, we have received another donation from Ed Zweeny's, this time in the amount of $608, specifically for families in need. This brings us up over the $10,000 mark for donations from Ed Zweeny's. So I am respectfully requesting that we accept this donation.
Very good. Any comments from the board? It's just, yeah, it's pretty impressive. All right.
Move the Select Board vote pursuant to master in law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and per its policy on solicitation, acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept a donation to the Department of Elder and Human Services, EHS, from Ed Zweeny's in the amount of $608 for assistance for Littleton families in need.
Second. Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Thanks again, Ed.
Library, acceptance of a donation. Mr. Alvarez.
Hi. Sam Alvarez, Library Director. So we received a $3 donation from Bruce Hobbin on behalf of the Helen G. Hobbin Foundation for $1,000 to go to children's books, $1,000 to go to new adult books, and $1,000 to go to general operations.
Great.
So I'd like to accept that.
All right.
Awesome.
Any comments from the board?
That's great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Ready for a motion?
Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to master in law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and per its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purpose, to accept a donation to the Rubenor Library from the Helen G. Hobbin Foundation in the amount of $3,000. Said funds will be allocated, $1,000 to the children's area, $1,000 to new adult books, and $1,000 towards general operation and infrastructure needs.
Second. Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Croory, Town Clerk update regarding passage of the Votes Act.
This filled up a big portion of our packet.
I'd say. I, of course, read the whole thing.
Good evening, Diane Croory, Town Clerk. Thank you for having me this evening. As you well know, you do have a packet from me this evening. Two of the biggest things I wanted to go over with you is the state obviously has put together changes regarding elections, and the biggest thing is, obviously, they're mandating elections without funding them. So, as we all know, early voting is one of the biggest things that they're pushing for, and early voting has happened in the past. It is now happening with our primaries and our state elections and our national elections. However, they are also pushing us to do our local elections, which they said they would not be doing. So tonight, I'm telling you that they are pushing us to do local elections, and they have stated you could opt out. But if you opt out, you have to do it every single year. And if you opt out, you have to do it in two steps. First, I come before you and tell you that we are thinking about opting out of not doing our local elections, and then you have to present it to all of the voters. And it's the voters that actually make that decision, not Select Board and not me as the Town Clerk. So in doing so, when you do those two steps, you have to do it almost three months ahead of time. So on top of doing all the nominations and all of that, we have to be thinking about that. So in speaking with all the town clerks in the area, they're all just saying, it's, just throwing their hands up and saying, it doesn't make any sense to opt out. We're just, they're all just going to be doing it. So we have to think about, what are we doing? Well, we have to think about the monies that it's going to entail. And what does it entail? It entails basically doing the postcards that they're going to be doing for all of the elections now, which is sending out 7,000 postcards to every registered voter in the town. So going to be looking to the Finance Committee for more monies for the Town Clerk's office on the election part of it, which we don't have right now. And we're going to be having an election in May that I don't have those monies for. So unless this board is thinking that we should opt out for this first election, then we're going to be going forward with having that be a mandate.
No, I definitely have questions, but I don't want you to be able to present your presentation.
Yeah. Do you have more to speak to?
Yeah. And the other thing that I'm here for is the more important, which is going to be the most current one, is for our state primary. And every year, in every election, I will be coming forward to you, and I have to ask permission from you to make a decision as to having police officers at our elections. And that is a decision that you now are mandated to do. You have to make that decision, and you have to give me permission and the police chief to make that decision. You have to tell me it's okay to have police officers at our elections now, because where before, the police chief and myself, we just got together, I would send him an email and say, I need police officers to be at our polling locations. Now I have to come to you and ask you to give me permission to ask the police chief to give us permission to have police officers at our elections. So I'm here this evening to ask for your permission to give us that permission to do so. So not only is it at our polls, but it's also at our early voting.
When you say that the early, that the opt-out has to be brought to the voters, it has to be brought to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Which doesn't, would have to be happening, actually, at our special town meeting.
And apart from the postcards, is there significant labor costs associated with early voting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have any idea how much that is?
So the last time it took us, well, labor-intensive, it was two months' worth of work.
I mean, on top of, like, but were you doing it during regular business hours, or did you have additional?
Both. So it's both.
Additional hours?
Sure. So we were down in the Cooper Room, Room 103, in the multipurpose room. During regular business hours, we had to work during the weekend because it was mandated. You had so many, like, during the primary, you only had to do one Saturday. During the.
Presidential.
Presidential, we had to do two Saturdays. And you're mandated to do a minimum of your regular business hours and a Saturday.
Are you going to ask the finance, the FinCom, for that, for money to cover those expenses as well?
Sure, I can ask them anything.
Well, I'm curious if, can you quantify them? I mean.
So we try to use as much as possible our senior citizens to, you know, to help out. But, you know, it doesn't always happen, and we, you know, we do the best that we can to use them as much as possible. But, you know, I can only do as much as I can do. And then each and every day during early voting, everything that happens during that day has to be entered into the state system. So once you close your polls for the day, you now leave the polls, and you have to go upstairs, and it takes anywhere from two to three hours of entering all of that into the system. So, yeah, so.
Other board members?
So my, I would propose that we create an article that asks the voters to opt out for the next, for next May. So I would propose that we create a warrant article for special, to opt out, so that we can figure this out, so we can quantify, so we can figure out what the budget needs to be. Again, it's mandated, so, you know, maybe the voters say, yeah, we want it. We want the early voting in May as well, in which case, we're going to have to figure that out as well. But gives you an opportunity to go to finance and ask for the monies. When we go to the town, can we include in that what that budget impact and the hours can be in the warrant article?
So for instance, this state primary, I've already figured the hours will be Saturday, August 27th, 8 until 5; Monday, 8 until 4; Tuesday, 8 until 4; Wednesday, 9 until 6; Thursday, 8 until 4; and Friday, 8 until noon. So they're already figured out. So those are going to be basically probably the same hours that I would do in May for our regular election, for our town election. Not only is that the early voting hours, but my office is still open, so, you know.
And it's got to be a separate location.
Yeah, so we'll be down here in these three rooms, the Cooper Room, 103. And it's not bad using the multipurpose room and the Cooper Room, except for we're displacing all of.
Other programming.
All the programming. And if it is a, if the House and the Senate don't push off the remote meetings, that means that everybody's coming back into Town Hall, which means that I have to break down 103, which won't be that bad, but it means I'm breaking down 103. Will work. So I'm breaking down and setting back up, which means 6:00 AM setting back up. So the hours extend, you know, in the morning and at night. So, you know, we're not just talking about 8:00 AM. We're talking about longer hours.
And also the lost hours from your office.
Right. Right. You know, and every Saturday, you know, this Saturday of the early voting is also the last day to register to vote. So that 8 to 5, it's this extended day as well. So we have to have, you know, Town Clerk and Assistant Town Clerk at both locations. You know, so we've got three, it's not like being down at the school. We're in one location. We're at three locations, one person, running to three locations and upstairs. So it's not as easy as being at the school voting.
Anyone else have comments?
Yeah, it's, some of the smaller towns, this is even more of a nightmare for, I'm sure. But I think to help us and to help, obviously, the finance team, I would definitely, this becomes a math problem to some degree. You know exactly how many hours and how many people you're going to need to staff it. And I don't know if the police, I mean, the police typically staff it anyway, so I don't know, but that's, if they have to be at these.
Right.
That's more, and I don't know if the town, is that coming out of our budget, or is that?
So typically, the police department does pay for their own police officers.
This might change that, because his budget's going to have to change.
Right.
I just, you know, to select me to coast point, I, sure, going a year to see, figure out what these costs are going to be, it's almost like, I'd rather see it go through this year, and we'll find out what those costs are going to be going forward. We can budget for it, but I, it's.
So I can tell you as well, at the presidential one, we did the early voting. I was bringing in, so Tom McLaughlin from IT was helping us.
Yeah.
Nancy was helping us. So it wasn't just my office. I had other departments coming in to help us.
O-T, a lot of overtime for those, yeah.
We couldn't keep up. When you're sending out 7,000 postcards and people are asking, and the way that the state has it set up, we can't enter those 7,000 people once. We have to enter them in twice, the way that the state has it set up. So it's not an easy system. You'd think that after doing it the first time, they would figure it out, but they still haven't figured it out. So we're doing it twice, you know, so.
All right, call for volunteers.
Do you need a motion from us for the?
I do need a motion from you just for the.
Police.
Police. Okay.
Do we, do we have one or just?
I have a written sample down at the bottom.
I guess-
Yeah, go ahead.
In the past, you would mention that you would just simply let the, he'd know when the primaries were and everything, and then he would set up his shift schedule.
Yep.
So-
Yeah, and, yeah, that's all I did.
What has changed now is we have to give permission for the chief to-
Yeah, I just need you to, the basic motion and to give us permission to say that it's okay to have the police there.
Correct me if I, if this is-
Trying to figure out what the-
This should encompass it.
Yep.
Move the Select Board, grant the authority to the police chief and the town clerk to provide sufficient police officers for early voting and primary elections.
Yes.
Second.
Does it have to be date-specific or just?
No.
Okay.
So, that motion was made by Chuck, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The chair's in favor, 5-0.
Is this up every year?
So, every election or?
Every election, I have to come back and ask the same.
Well, we'll see more often.
So, it's literally stated that way, like, we couldn't take a motion tonight to say henceforth.
I asked the question.
Okay.
And the question is, every election, you have to do the same thing. Because something could change in the town with the townspeople-
Okay.
With the board, with anything that would state that you no longer want this to happen.
It feels like there needs to, we're going to have to have, we should have another conversation about the money that this is going to incur if we want to opt out. Like you said, maybe it's not, maybe it's a wash and maybe all the work it takes to opt out is the same cost as running the early voting for the local elections, but maybe not. But I don't want to just say, "Oh, yeah, Diane's doing 200% more hours for the next three elections" and not talk about it anymore. Because if you don't get support from your volunteers, maybe there's something else that we can do.
And not to be a, looking down the road, we may also, if we don't get the volunteers, there may come a time where we end up having to pay our poll workers.
Yeah.
Which is what a lot of cities and towns are doing. And not that, you know, the volunteers, you know, they're getting their monies off of their taxes, but, you know, if we don't look at how to better serve the seniors in a better way, then we may lose a lot of that. And so, then what, where do I reach?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Very good. All right. Next up, we have public input. If anybody would like to come to the mic and speak, you're welcome to. We'll just ask you to state your name and address in advance. Nope? All right, then. Board member updates. Today, we'll start with Chuck.
Pass to Mark. Yield the floor.
So, I went, a couple of other members did, to the Lori Trahan event. And George Sanders was there doing an excellent job lobbying for the town. We should have him at all such events, so.
I don't think we can stop him.
So, thank you, George.
Thank you, George. Ms. Napoli, do you have an update?
Sure, I just wanted to say thank you to Paul Banjoni, Representative Arcero, and Lemonster Monument Company for your work on the World War I Monument Renovation Project. I don't know if people have driven by, but it's really, came out beautiful. Very, very happy with it. I'm going to talk to our Veterans Agent, Mr. Borowski, about maybe doing a rededication ceremony for the monument in November, Veterans Day. But I just wanted to say thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Really echoing both. I think Mark was referring to the PFAS facility on Wickham that since Trahan was at. So, that was a great event, and also just to see what's in that building was pretty amazing itself. One of the, first of its kind in the state, which is pretty impressive.
Cutting edge, yeah.
And just echo what you said about, you know, it's a much more walkable monument now. It actually draws you in. Before, it was just kind of in the middle of the grass, in the field, or in the woods. So, now, it's definitely something that catches your eye when you're driving by. And I think it's a fantastic job, just a great work. Yeah, that's really, really it, kind of a-
I also went to that PFAS presentation. And my favorite part was when the Congresswoman walked in and all of us were standing in the room, and she said, "Hi, George." So, keep it up, George. All right. Thank you very much. So, now on to appointments. First one is the agricultural-
I had one other thing.
Oh, yeah.
For people that don't know, the triathlon is this weekend at night?
Appleman.
Appleman. It's Sunday.
Thank you.
That's a good heads up.
Always fun to watch them run into the water. Agricultural Commission, is anyone here? I don't see anyone from the AgCom here. Oh, hello. Let's see, we have three applicants for three spots, is that correct? Two applicants for two spots? Yes, go ahead.
Sure. So, there's four annual reappointments to consider for the AgCom. Two farmer positions expiring June 30th, 2025, and two citizen-at-large positions, one expiring 2025 and one expiring in 2024. In your packet, I believe you have the AgCom recommendations.
We do, thank you. So, if the applicants are here and would like to say a few words, please, would you please stand up and introduce yourself?
Podium.
I'm sorry, at the podium, so the people playing at home can hear you?
Hi, I'm Jerry Cavalo. I'm the owner of Johnny Pudge Farm. I was in a citizen-at-large position on the board on the AgCom. And since then, my business has grown. It's still not, I still only do eight hours a day on it because I was working a day job. But we packed out about 11,000 bags of greens last year. So, the thought was, there aren't that many farmers in town. I'm almost there, so I should take a farmer position.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board? No?
Great.
All right.
Yeah, good evening. Phil Schmidt for Kemlock Street. The reason that I threw my hat into the ring, as the expression goes, is because I'm very much concerned about the Nogog Orchard and the serious deterioration I've noticed over the last two years. Little bit of Bimac ground. I was a past farmer. Worked on a farm in Vermont, thousand acres, over four farms. High school agriculture, horticultural background. I have a couple gardens and a whole mess of fruit trees. And so, I have a little bit of a background on farming and agriculture. So, I just threw my hat in because I didn't know how many candidates were there.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the board? If not, nope.
So, that would be a citizen-at-large?
That would be this, one of the citizens-at-large, that's correct.
All right, great.
And you all have seen the recommendation from AgCom. It's in the packet. And so, I think if no one else has any comments, we can go to a, we can go to a motion.
Recommendation was in that letter, right?
It's right in the bottom of the control sheet. On the second page.
Oh, okay.
Move that the Select Board vote to appoint G. Tommy Jensen and Jerry Cavalo as farmer members for three-year terms on the AgCom expiring June 30th, 2025. And move the Select Board vote to appoint William Schmidt. I'm sorry. Read it some front of you, Chuck. Andrew Sumaco as a citizen-at-large member for a three-year term on the AgCom expiring June 30th, 2025.
And then you want to do the others, the last citizen? The other citizen?
Yeah.
William Schmidt?
And move that the Select Board vote to appoint William Schmidt as a citizen-at-large member for a two-year term on the AgCom expiring June 30th, 2024.
Second. Moved by Chuck, seconded by Mark. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Please get sworn in. Thank you. And we're on to FinCom. I believe we have one seat and one applicant. Was here last week, or two weeks ago. And deferred to, to, was it?
Faulkner?
Fred Faulkner.
Fred Faulkner, yes.
Fred Faulkner, yes.
For the discussion?
I don't believe there's any discussion on-
I did meet with him. I just, yeah, so I, it was more so just I had, I didn't know that much about Brian. I know he's on FinCom before, so I asked for a meeting just to kind of get an idea of where he stood on things. So, I was very impressed, very analytical, thoughtful. He was part of the original, some of the policy work that was done, that created our policies that we still use today. So, I think he'll be a good member on that team.
Perfect. All right.
Move the Select Board vote to appoint Brian Tarbox for a two-year term on the Finance Committee expiring June 30th, 2024.
Second. Moved by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Welcome, Brian. Go get sworn in. All right. Joint meeting with the Sustainability Commission Committee.
Chair.
Hello. Do you have a quorum tonight?
About that.
Yeah, so I'm Sarah Rambacker. I'm on the Sustainability Committee. We have a board with 11 positions. It was made that way eight years ago. And I look back at the numbers. We've never had more than nine members actually appointed in those eight years. And for the last five years, we've only had seven, except for one brief period when we had eight. So, recently, we lost a couple of members. And we lost, I'd like to give thanks to Renato Nakagomi, who was our chair. He moved out of the state, so we lost him as our chair, but he was excellent. So, with that, we are down to five members and one who has already let the committee know that she has a work conflict ongoing. So, that leaves us with four, with a quorum requirement of six when we have 11 seats. So, I had talked to Anthony, and he suggested that maybe reducing the positions to seven would be appropriate. I looked at the list of all the committees, and the median size of the committees are seven. So, I will leave it to you to discuss.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sarah, do you think that it's realistic for us to be able to get the committee back up to seven? Or are we, do we, do you think we might have to come back to the table and?
We want to go to five.
Yeah, I mean, if you think it'll be productive with five, I mean, it's before us now, so we can kind of figure it out. And you're there, and so you see who was able to attend and that kind of thing. So, your recommendation weighs heavily, I think, on-
Yeah.
On our decision.
Certainly, it would be easier to get quorum with a size of five. I mean, it, so seven would give us a quorum of four. That seems doable right now. But I, as I was looking at this, I was also thinking, you know, even if we have more people who want to be involved, we're very much a committee that does a lot of service and involves other members of the community in our activities. So, there's nothing prohibiting someone from participating with us and helping us out on, you know, the things that we've done, like Zero Waste Day, or, you know, researching things like EV cruisers and things like that, if other people want to be involved in the committee but can't make the commitment to being on the committee, then we-
Would it make sense to add alternate members so that if you don't have a quorum of the core members, you could have a quorum with two alternates, one or two alternates?
This is a bylaw committee, though.
I'm not sure.
Okay, so there's a legal restriction on that?
There may, there may.
I guess the, like, my question is, why did we ever have 11? Was it because we had 11 interested people and we didn't want to say no?
I think possibly that was.
That was probably where it came, okay. I didn't want to, I didn't know if it was something that fluctuated. All of a sudden, we get a lot of people. So, I do like the number seven, I think, here. I, we can-
If you feel as though you, the number four is something you guys can get to, it is something that I think if more and more people knew about it, not, that's about a slight on the Sustainability Committee. But I think this is something that a lot of people have interest in.
Yeah, now more than ever, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I think that, I think if we can do a better job of marketing, we can help you to drive a couple more members for membership.
But even if that doesn't-
If you're comfortable with seven, you can make a quorum of four.
But even if that doesn't happen, if you're comfortable, if you think you can get four people there on a regular basis, then seven would make sense because it gives you room to grow.
I certainly would love to have more people involved. But right now, we've been able to get four.
Okay. I suggest we change it to seven?
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with that. One other thing that, I don't know if this is the next thing or the same thing, but Anthony had mentioned, so right now, it's indeterminate terms. And I don't know if that is something that you want to consider putting in terms, just to sort of engage people more.
That would go to how the committee was set up, I'd imagine. You know, just whether or not it was a bylaw committee or, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's a bylaw committee. It just looked up, yeah.
And if it's not a bylaw committee, then we have the power to change it?
Right.
We do, but I think I'd take the recommendation of the committee itself to say, we've discussed it. This is our recommendation. You know, we'll do-
How to stagger the terms?
Stagger the terms, yeah, exactly. I'm trying to.
I started to stagger.
That's what I would recommend, that they have control.
Come back to us and say, "We've come up with a, maybe if you get a quorum and a vote, of an agreement," so that we would make sense.
And then when we make the appointments, we can assign those termination years?
Yeah. Does that sound okay?
That's, so just to clarify, so you would set the size so that we can, again, meet? And then at our next meeting, we could discuss who wants to have a term until?
Yeah.
Instead of indefinite. Sometimes indefinite scares people away, frankly.
I agree.
So, yeah, if you come back to us and say, "We think that three-year term staggered is a good way to go," we can vote to have that, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Great. So, I guess we'll do the size right now.
All right. Move that the Select Board vote to reduce the number of members of the Sustainability Committee to seven seats and further suggest the Sustainability Committee recommends staggered terms for said members, the Select Board to be voted, it's right in there, at the July 25th, 2022 Select Board meeting.
Second.
I was thinking of the same way.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We're back in business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will just mention, as you said, to get some more visibility, that there is the North Central Climate Change Collaborative that Renato has been going to meetings with. And we will definitely be looking for some Select Board participation on that and help to get some visibility into that.
I had attended a couple of those with Renato. So, if you can connect, you've been going to them?
I haven't. I have a longstanding commitment.
Okay. Yeah, no, no, no. But when he went away, my communication went away. So, I'll try to, I'll try to go back through it and see who was in that string so I can try to be that conduit back to you.
Great. We'll let you know when we're ready.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Updating discussion about Nogog Orchard Ad Hoc Working Group. I believe we had this on, but I'm not sure that we have anything specific to discuss. But Anthony and I talked about it, and I didn't want to remove it from the agenda in case we had something to discuss.
So, I can just give the board a quick update about the progress that we have made since the last time we met. We did have a meeting of the working group, and we went through the RFP that was posted and the response that we received from the respondent. And we identified areas of concern, areas that we were in agreement with, and then areas of omissions, questions, and where we need more information. So, we had a robust discussion about that. We put together a summary of comments, and we've been, that has been circulated to the committee. We are meeting on Wednesday evening, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we're going to go through that summary, and then we will finalize that and submit it to the Select Board. One of the things, just to give you just a really high-level overview, overall, the committee was very pleased with the response that we received. We thought it was, the respondent is the right fit for the community of Littleton. The areas of concern that we did identify were with respect to parking, potential impact on a butters if some of the events go forward that the respondent is potentially planning. We talked about deer fencing. There was concerns about it maybe blocking off some of the walking trails. And then just some of the omissions within the agreement itself had to do with the pesticide application plan, some questions about equipment. And just, we were looking for some more information about finances. We identified and acknowledged that the respondent is looking for more information from the town. And one of those areas was crop yield reports. So, Will Pickard is actually doing some research and trying to get that information that we can, so we can provide it to the respondent. So, after we meet Wednesday and have our update, we're going to finalize our summary. Initially, it didn't seem like that there was really any comments or changes to the draft, but we'll know more about that when we meet on Wednesday night. And then we will have a final summary for the board at our next meeting. So, that's all.
Thank you. Any comments from in the back? Forward.
All right.
Thanks for all the time and effort.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to bring, probably a good time to bring this up. I went through and looked at our video from two meetings ago when Ms. Napoli had brought up about the work to be done on the inside versus outside. I will, I'm here to say that all of us are knuckleheads because you were right. And I apologize for not catching that. Drinking from a firehouse for the first month, I think I'll blame it on that. But that's, if I offended you in any way, that, you know.
So, I don't have an excuse.
As I went back and watched the video, I was like, wow, we missed it. Or I missed it for sure, but I-
No, I think we're all knuckleheads.
Yeah.
That's a fair assessment.
I don't think the two are related, but I agree.
No, I appreciate that, Gary. I really do. Thank you for taking the time to go back and check the meeting and see what we actually did talk about.
Yes.
So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's going to be good work. At the end of the day, it's going to get done, so.
Yeah.
All right. Select Board review of the committee assignments and creative liaisons. I think this came out of a discussion that we didn't have about whether Select Board members should be chairs of other boards or committees, and additionally, whether we should officially assign liaisons to some of the other boards in town. should officially assign liaisons to some of the other boards in town. We never really went through, we went through the list or, or came up with any overall strategy. So I guess the first question would be, to, to talk about it at a higher level before we even talk about the individual boards, you know, does anyone have feelings, strong feelings about chairing other boards, being members of other boards, and/or do we need a liaison for every board? I'll open it up with that question for any of the other board members.
It's loaded. So I don't think we should be chairs of other boards, I said that. I think we should have liaisons for a lot of the boards so that if, if not all of the boards, whether they're elected or appointed, so that they have someone that they can go to, to, just a liaison so that they have a contact, that, you know, appointed contact for. That, and that person should probably, they don't necessarily have to attend the meetings, but you should at least watch the agendas and read the minutes afterwards so you have an idea what's going on. Right? That would be my opinion.
So there are, what, 30 here? Maybe? Maybe more? I mean, that
Fewer.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So I think that some committees certainly are elected, and some require maybe already are, are well in order, just say, like Conservation Commission, for example, like the Clean Lakes Committee, to me, aren't, those might be ones that don't require a Select Board liaison. I look at it more, and they're not actually on this list, but like the Shade Tree Committee, like committees that we appoint. You know, we just met with Sarah and talked about the Sustainability Committee, I don't see that.
They're on the back.
Oh, are they on the back? Oh, all right, perfect. Oh, perfect. But I just, the committees that we appoint, I think we certainly should have a liaison to. I just mentioned Shade Tree, Cultural Council. I know that they appreciate having a member of the Select Board pay attention to them, so to speak, and really, I think another thing that the board needs to become more cognizant of is funding these committees. Shade Tree was one that was considered a budget orphan until a few years ago. You know, we gave them this whole mission, and they didn't have any funds to really work with, but we've since changed that. But I think that we should really just examine the committees overall and see if there are any more budget orphans out there that might require some funding source through the budget process, and I think having liaison to those committees helps with that in some respects. So we could actually just maybe go down the list one by one, I know there's a lot here, and just maybe tackle it that way, Mr. Chair, do you think?
Like, give it a thumbs up, thumbs down, we think we need a little bit more attention on it?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we could do that. I don't have an objection to that. You know, I was going to say, I'm not sure that, like, ConsCom is a good example. I do have communication, you know, when, when there's something that someone on that board is curious about, you know, Chase will call me
Okay.
Because we have a personal relationship, and I wonder if there was a liaison to ConsCom,
Okay.
if that might not be a bad, that would, might, might be a good idea
Okay.
because, you know, they, they have someone to reach out to that, that's responsible
Okay.
for at least representing.
All right, good, so we're going to put you down for ConsCom.
Sure, but, but I mean, just in general, in general
Yeah, I just kind of picked that one out, but, yeah, no, I have certainly
I understand what you were saying.
Yeah, okay.
But there are 44 boards on this, right?
Right.
Yeah, and so
We, I think we have to pick and choose.
Well, we can't, yeah, we can't have lia, we can't be, I can't be a liaison for 10 boards.
No.
Right?
So that's why we need to kind of prioritize. Right? So if you want to start with Clean Lakes?
Well, what about
Want to just go down the list?
Yeah, but what about like AgCom and BPAC?
Those are assigned. Oh, AgCom's
No, AgCom isn't.
Oh, all right, yeah, I totally skipped them.
I have no problem being for AgCom.
Okay.
I know most of the farmers anyway, so
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I guess we can do this. I was thinking, let's try it, see, see how far we get. BPAC? This is, now, we're talking liaison, right?
Right.
So I'm the liaison for Transportation Advisory?
Yep.
Does it make sense for those two to be aligned?
It probably does. And again, like, if you're the liaison, it doesn't mean that you need to attend.
Right, right.
So I'll put you on for that. Clean Lakes? I can do that. CPC? I don't even know, I don't think I've ever even
Do we, do you think we need a liaison to CPC?
I don't know, I don't know what their
There is a FinCom, there is a FinCom
Liaison?
Member on that committee, so
Okay.
There is.
But that's
Right.
I don't know if we need a
Because that's, I mean, there's certainly a financial, clearly, a financial component to that committee.
Oh, it's huge, yeah.
Huge, but do you think we need a Select Board liaison?
I don't know.
I personally don't, but
So what are the, the three buckets have liaisons in some way, shape, or form, right? Well, Park and Rec Commission for Recreation, Historical
Yeah.
So there is, there is some
Oversight?
I think so. I think there's some connectivity to CPC, FinCom, and each of the buckets that we can
Yeah.
Okay.
that are managed by CPC.
Okay.
Some level of liaison there, so I don't think it's necessary to have a liaison.
And they come in front of our body if they
Right, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So open?
So open. ConsCom, I'll do, I'll take. Council on Aging?
Yeah.
You were Mark.
You know, we've been fine, both
I'll put you both on, that's fine.
I think it's
I would say
Lot going on with
Skip, skip the subcommittees for the Council on Aging, I believe. I was, I was, I was attending those, but
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's, I don't know.
I guess in, in the Council on Aging meetings, if it comes up that there's something hot going on, one of us, we, we would just kind of spill over into that and attend one of those meetings.
Okay, that sounds good. Cultural?
I've been, I've been that in the past.
Disability, Gary?
You want it?
Yeah, I'll take that.
It's interesting, I'm, I'm on that commission, so
So I think
This is, it is something we look at every year, maybe, and redo, but where I'm on that commission, we don't really need a liaison.
Correct, and FinCom? I would assume that would be you, too, given your
See, these are those, those interesting committees where we have two appointees on FinCom from
It's a liaison, there's someone for them to
Yeah, to talk directly to. I'm actually, absolutely taken. I talk to Alicia quite often, so.
Historical Commission?
I'll take that.
Okay. Housing Authority, that would be me, since I'm elected. Insurance Advisory? Nothing. Land Sale, I think that's an as-needed, and we usually get on that when we have to.
Yeah.
Light and Water, no. Common Committee?
I don't think it's a bad idea to
I thought we talked about having a liaison to Light and Water.
Okay.
We did talk about that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm happy to do it.
How many do you
I've been liaising with them for the last couple of years, with Seward.
Does anyone else interested in that?
When do they meet?
Wednesday evenings.
Yeah, I'll put my name next to it, too. One of us will
Slash, slash Ram.
Okay. Littleton Common Committee?
I think that's actually
We, yeah, we need to
Is that one on, the, one of the ones that we're not sure?
Yeah, we got to think about what we're doing that.
Which, that was, I was tasked with trying to wrangle that in the revitalization and try to figure out what's what and
Right.
LCTV Advisory? I don't know that we need one for that.
They need members.
They, well, then they come to us with any comments.
Right.
MBTA Rail Advisory Committee, that's Anthony primarily. Stationery is covered, MPIC is covered, Orchard Working Group is covered. Open Space and Rec Plan Implementation, I, that, one of my goals was to, I guess, kind of revamp that a little bit and maybe change the, the format slightly, so I'm going to, I'm going to take that one, if no one objects. Park and Rec?
Yeah, I've, I've been, any of the MOUs that have gone around between when I was on the School Committee and then when I came over to the Select Board, I've been the person that's sat at those meetings, so as a liaison. Again, it's an elected board, the commissioners, but I'm happy to have my name next to it as a liaison.
Okay. Anyone else want to? Permanent Municipal Building? Is that you, Mark? Were you
I've been attending their meetings often.
I'm going to put you on that one.
Yeah.
Personnel Advisory?
Yeah, I'd like to be a
Okay, Gary? Planning Board?
I have, I tend to watch all of their meetings.
Okay, I'm going to put you on that as well, then. School Committee?
If we want to put a name there, just because I was on School Committee, I'm happy to
Shade Tree?
What about Select Board?
Yeah, you're, you're our liaison as Select Board, Gary.
I'll take Shade Tree.
Okay. Sustainability?
That's me.
That's true.
Okay. Taxation Aid?
What is, I don't know what that
I don't know, I don't know either.
Mr. Chair, this is for the TRED program.
Oh, okay. Is this a brand-new one?
No.
A brand-new committee?
No, it's the committee that decides
Yeah, I'm interested in that.
funding amounts for the TRED program.
I'm interested in that.
Okay, Gary, I'll take it out to Gary.
I work with that, with the senior
Space Needs is Mark. Transportation Advisory, Charles. Trust Fund Commission?
Charles, mad at me?
Charles, Charles DeGhost! Get in here at this minute! Charles Joseph, is that it? And ZBA, I don't, that, that one seems like a procedural board that doesn't need a liaison, although I could be wrong.
I think, I think it's okay.
Okay.
It's the building commissioner is usually
Yeah, okay.
It's a decision that he's made that someone's aggrieved and is trying to get relief from.
I guess the, so then the other thing to talk about is how do we make this known that we're, we're available to, to these boards if they need to, to contact us? Reach out to the chairs, put them on the website?
I think we should just email the chairs.
I think we should individually, yeah, whichever ones we have, we should, we should reach out to them
Yeah.
individually.
Yeah, and just copy
Did Anthony have an idea?
I don't think so. I think he's open to ideas, but we could do it either way, it can come from Anthony's office or individually.
I think having us email would be a good way
And maybe, maybe copy it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you, did you take the names down?
I hope so.
Would you mind putting them into this?
Sure.
And recirculating it, and then we can send emails out with, and it's easy, Anthony?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. TA update?
Hi, we have Alicia here.
Hey, we're kind of doing well on time, so
Jinx us every week!
No, no pressure.
Every
Good evening, Honorable Select Board. Tonight, we have from Melanson CPAs, Zachary Ventross, who will be going over the fiscal year 21 audit. You'll be seeing the management letter along with the financial statement for your review.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. So as Alicia said, my name is Zach Ventross. I am an Audit Manager with Melanson CPAs. Tonight, I'm going to go over the Town of Littleton's June 30, 2021 financial statements. I'm going to highlight some certain financial trends and some account balances, and if at any point anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask at that time. Before I jump into the financial statements, I think it's important to have a takeaway from my presentation tonight. And I think the takeaway from my presentation tonight is that the Town of Littleton is in a good financial position. You have a, a good general fund, unassigned fund balance, and you have a well-funded OPEB trust fund. So I think those should be the two big takeaways tonight, is that you are in a good financial position, you have a very well-funded OPEB trust fund, and you have a, a very good general fund, unassigned fund balance. So I'm just going to walk you through the financial statements, I'm not sure this has ever been done here in the town before, but if I could have you turn to the first page after the table of contents. The first page after the table of contents is actually the independent auditor's report. This is what the Town of Littleton hired us to produce. The town received a clean opinion, which means there were no exceptions, and this is the best opinion you can receive from an independent auditor, and it's the same opinion that the town has received in prior years. Next, if I could have you turn to page four, which is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And the Management's Discussion and Analysis takes place on pages four through 11. This is essentially just a narrative summary of the results of operations. The section also discusses any major financial area, so instead of just simply sitting here and reading this to you, I'd actually like to jump to page 12, which is the first page of the Statement and Position, where I'll discuss the same thing that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So page 12 and page 13 are your Statement of Net Position. You can see there's three columns. You have your governmental activities, you have your business-type activities, and any of your total, which is a summation of your governmental plus your business-type activities. So we're going to look at a couple of balance sheets tonight. So this is just a balance sheet, first page is your assets, the second page will show your liabilities and your fund balance. The difference between the two balance sheets is this page right here, page 12, the Statement of Net Position, is a long-term financial view for the Town of Littleton. So in that governmental activities, you have your general fund, your stabilization funds, your special revenue funds, your capital project funds, your trust funds, they're all consolidated together, and then the town's long-term assets and the town's long-term liabilities are included here. And I'm going to focus on is those long-term assets and those long-term liabilities. So on page 12, maybe about halfway down the page, you're going to see capital assets. And the first item under there is your non-depreciable capital assets. Now, it has a balance of $29,930,000. It's actually about $11.5 million increase from the prior year. Now, that increase is primarily due to additions in, in work on the library project, and that work amounted to about $9.8 million in fiscal year 21. Additionally, there was about $1.2 million in land purchases in fiscal year 21 as well, So that's why you see that large increase in that balance from 2020 to 2021. Right below that, you're going to see other capital assets net of accumulated depreciation. And that has a balance of $65,181,000. It's actually about a $2.5 million decrease from the prior year. Now, that decrease is due to your depreciation expense exceeding your current year additions. In fiscal year 21, your depreciation expense was 4.5 million, but you had additions of about 1.8. So that's why you see that, that slight decrease in that balance, is that your depreciate, your annual depreciation expense on those assets exceeded what were the additions for the current year. If I could have you turn the page to page 13, which again, is this a continuation of the Statement and Position? We'll talk about the liabilities next. Maybe about halfway, or maybe about a third of the way down the page, under non-current long-term liabilities, the very first item there is your bonds and loans payable net of current portion. And that had a balance of $19,842,000. It's actually about a $2.4 million decrease from the prior year. And that decrease is due to your principal payments on your bonds that are made on an annual basis. So that's why you see that decrease in the current year. What's important to note is your users of the financial statements, your bond rating agencies and others, like to see between 70% to 75% of debt paid off within 10 years. So as of June 30, 2021, the governmental activities will be paying off 80% within 10 years, which is a good position for the Town of Littleton to be in. Likewise, your, your, your business-type activities are going to have 72% of debt paid off within 10 years. Again, that's going to be a good financial position for the Town of Littleton. Something to be aware of is the Town of Littleton does have bond anticipatory notes. If you were to look up maybe four line items from the top, you'll see bond anticipation notes payable. It's about $7,42,000 for your governmental activities, and it's $14,785,000. When those get bonded, they will impact that ratio of that 80 and that 72% that I spoke about. So that ratio I'm giving you does not factor in your debt that hasn't been taken to a long-term payment schedule, it's still short-term right now. Right underneath your bonds and loans payable, you'll see the net pension liability. Your net pension liability is, has a balance of $13,904,000. It's actually about a $1.6 million decrease from the prior year. And what this represents is the town's portion of the total unfunded liability for the Middlesex County Retirement System. So in, in fiscal year 21, that liability did decrease, and that decrease is primarily due to investment results for the Middlesex County Retirement System coming in greater than what they anticipated. And for the entire system, it was about $71 million that the investment results came in greater than what they anticipated. Littleton's portion of that is about 1 point, excuse me, it's about 1.1 million. So that's why you see that's the primary reason for that decrease in that liability, was positive investment results that were greater than what the system anticipated, which led to a decrease in the liability for the Town of Littleton. What is important to note about the Middlesex County Retirement System is that it's funded at 53.4%. This is on the lower end when comparing to other retirement systems in the Commonwealth. What we generally see in the Commonwealth is anywhere from 70% to 75% funded, is about average. So the Middlesex being at about 54% is again, on the lower side of that, and that's something I wanted to bring to your attention.
Can you tell me the difference in our OPEB versus the average?
I will get to that in a moment. That was going to be the next thing. I'm literally going to get to that next. So the next line item is your net OPEB liability. And your net OPEB liability has a balance of $5,658,000. It's actually about a 12.1 million dollar decrease from the prior year. Now, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is the health insurance. Now, this number is determined by an actuary that's hired by the Town of Littleton. Now, I spoke that there was a very large decrease in your, in your net OPEB liability, and that decrease is primarily due to a difference between expected and actual experience. Now, actual medical premiums and active employee turnover were lower than what was anticipated. So the actuary had established a value for what those premiums, what they expected them to be. They came in much lower than what they anticipated. Likewise, they expected a higher turnover. It was lower than what they expected, which really decreased your liability, and in total decreased your liability by about $9.9 million. Additionally, that decrease can be attributed to, similar to your retirement system, the investment results for the OPEB trust fund came in greater than what was anticipated by about $3.2 million. So there was an expectation that they would come in, they came in about, greater than about $3.2 million, which again, led to that decrease. So you had about $9.9 million decrease in that liability due to the difference between what the actuary expected and what was actually happening, and then about a $3 million decrease due to the investment results coming in greater than what they anticipated. Did that cover it or no?
Uh, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Sorry.
So in our financial policy...
I just had a question. So the, the date of the, the money that we're talking about is when? What, what is?
For the retirement system?
Yeah.
It is as of December 30th, 31st, 2020.
Okay. So this could be significantly, just judging on what the economy is doing?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure.
And you'll see that represented in your June 30, 2022 financial statements.
All right, thank you. Go to the next question.
Which we'll be jumping into soon. I just want to add a note in our financial policies, we've been adding extra money into the OPEB, paying more into OPEB, so we are, you will see in the new year, a shift more towards the pension, to fund the pension since we have funded so high the OPEB. I just wanted to make that note.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia.
And Alicia did mention that the, the OPEB trust fund is well-funded. I think it, it's very clear to me is if you turn to page 83, it's one of the last pages in the document, I think there's a great representation of this. So on page 83, we're going to look at right at the top there, that Schedule of Net OPEB Liability. And I'd like to look at that very first column, that June 30, 2021 column. You can see that the total OPEB liability as determined by your actuary is actually $27,713,000. But the town has already put funds set aside in your OPEB trust fund to begin funding that liability of $21,605,000, which leaves you with a net OPEB liability of about $6,62,000. So you can see that, that's funded at 78%. That's a very strong position for the Town of Littleton to be in. What we see for an average in the Commonwealth for towns, for their funding of OPEB trusts is anywhere from 0% to 10%. So the Town of Littleton to be at 78% is a really good financial position for the Town of Littleton to be in. It's been clear that you've taken this liability seriously, and you've been funding it year over year over year. And again, that puts you in comparative to your contemporaries in a much better financial We could jump back to page 13. That's everything I wanted to talk about on the long-term financial view for the Town of Littleton. If we could actually jump to page 16. Page 16 is another balance sheet, and this is your governmental funds balance sheet. So the difference between page 12 and page 16 is that page 16 is, is a short-term financial view for the Town of Littleton. You won't see any of your long-term assets, and you're not going to see any of your long-term liabilities noted on page 16. You'll see that there are four columns here. The first column is your general fund, which is a combination of your general fund plus your stabilization fund. You have your major library building fund, and then you have your non-major governmental funds. And what's in that non-major governmental funds is the remaining special revenue funds, capital project funds, trust funds, and they're all consolidated and presented as non-major governmental funds. And then that last column is, this is a summation of the previous three for your total governmental funds. And I'd like to pay attention to the very first column, which is your general fund. And the number that I would like to bring to your attention here is actually three numbers from the bottom, is your unassigned fund balance. That has a balance of $15,524,000. It's actually a significant increase from the prior year. That balance increased by about $4.4 million. And in a couple of minutes, I'll talk to you about why, the reason for that increase of about $4.4 million. But I think what's important to note is that, this is again, one of the more important numbers in your financial statements. It's really the starting point for your free cash calculation. Likewise, the town actually has policies on the fund balance for your unassigned fund balance. If we could jump to page nine, I think page nine in the Management's Discussion and Analysis provides a pretty good review of where you stand with those balances in comparison to your, your policy. So at the bottom of page nine, you'll see that there is the operating unassigned fund balance as well as the stabilization fund balance. And then the total of those, that $15,524 is going to tie back to page 16. So it's just breakdown of what makes up the, the general fund balance and what makes up the stabilization fund balance on page nine. Now, the town's policy for both of these is that they are to be greater than 5% of the total operating budget. And as you can see on page nine, for your general fund, unassigned fund balance, that percentage was at 21.5%, which again, exceeds your policy of your 5%. And likewise, your stabilization fund in comparison to your operating, total operating budget is at 6.6%. So both of these fund balances were right in line with the town policy, which again, is a good financial position that the town is in. And if we could jump back to page 16, I'll provide a bit more guidance and maybe some analysis on that figure. So the Governmental Finance Officers Association likes to see this number between 16% to 17% is what they recommend comparison to the total budget. For the Town of Littleton, it's actually at 28%. So you're even greater than what the GFOA or the Government Finance Officers Association would recommend as a good fund balance to be in. So the town does have a, a healthy unassigned fund balance, which gives you some financial flexibility into the future, and is a strong financial position for the Town of Littleton to be in, and will be viewed favorably by your users of the financial statements. Now, to kind of explain why this number increased so much, I did mention that it increased by about 4.4 million. I'd like to jump to page 77. So on page 77 is your general fund budgetary versus actual. You have four columns here. You have your original budget, you have your final budget, and that actual amount is going to be the actual revenues that came in or the actual expenses that went out. And that far right column, which is where I want to pay our attention, is either the favorable or unfavorable variances when comparing the final budget to the actual amounts. Maybe about a third of the way down the page, you'll see total revenues. So total revenues actually came in greater than what was anticipated or budgeted by the town by 3 million, 3.3 million. So this is an amount that you beat the budget by on the revenue side of the equation. So revenues came in greater than what you anticipated by about 3.3 million. And if you turn the page to page 78, about two-thirds of the way down the page, you're going to see total expenditures. And total expenditures had a favorable variance, so expenditures came in less than what you anticipated by $2,437,000. And you'll see that number right below is that the total turnbacks, or the amount you beat the budget by is that $5,740,000. So the town essentially, the way that you could look at that number is the town beat the budget by about 5.7 million. So the town started with an unassigned fund balance of about $11 million. It increased by about 5.7 due to your favorable turnbacks on your budgetary versus actual results. But then the town used about $650,000 during your FY '22 budgeting process, which decreased that down. It's not an exact science, but that's really the, the way that you can look at your increase or decrease in your unassigned fund balance. And this year, you had an increase of about 4.4, and it was primarily due to this $5.7 million favorable turnbacks on your budgetary versus actual results.
Question?
Yes.
So the lion's share of that revenue increase was the departmental fees and charges?
That's correct.
Do you know specifically where that came from?
Yes, it was about a $1.2 million non-budgeted revenue for the North Bridge Host Agreement.
Okay. Thanks.
And that's everything I wanted to bring to your attention on the financial statements. So again, in conclusion, the town is in a good financial position. You have a well-funded OPEB trust fund, and you have a healthy and a strong general fund, unassigned fund balance. Any questions on the financial statements before I move to the management letter?
No?
So in addition to proving out the numbers in your financial statements, we also look at your internal controls to make sure that the town's assets are being appropriately safeguarded. And if we had any improvements in those internal controls, we would recommend those here in the management letter. And if any of them were serious enough, we either classify them as a material weakness or as a significant deficiency. And we did not identify any material weaknesses, and we did not identify any significant deficiencies during our audit for June 30, 2021. If I could have you turn to page three, which is where the first recommendation is. And the first recommendation is to implement GASB, and GASB stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, Statement Number 84 for fiduciary activities. So the town didn't fully implement GASB 84 during the fiscal year. So what we're recommending here is that the town review Fund 8900, and ensure that the items that are being accounted for in Fund 8900 are being appropriately classified as a fiduciary activity, or should it be reclassified into a governmental activity. If you could turn the page to page four, which is where our second recommendation is, and it is to perform an integrity review over capital assets. So during our audit, we identified that there were no disposals of capital assets in the current year, and there was also some duplication of assets that were classified as governmental type assets as well as business-type assets in relation to the, the new sewer fund. So what we're recommending is that the town review the capital assets listing in detail to ensure that, on an annual basis, to ensure the accuracy of that listing. If you can turn the page to page five, we have our final two recommendations. And at the top is to review the OPEB census data for accuracy. So during our testing of the OPEB census data, we were unable to obtain some support for a couple of the individuals that we had selected for testing. So what we're recommending here is that the town review that census data file before it goes to the actuary, and ensure that it is complete and accurate. And then finally, at the bottom of page five, we have improved controls over changes to the vendor master file. So during our audit, we noticed that there were a few employees who have access to the vendor master file. So what we're recommending is that either that number of employees who have access to the vendor file be reduced, or there be compensating controls implemented by the town to ensure that any changes to the vendor master file are appropriate and accurate. And that does it for our management letter. If I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to take a moment to thank everybody involved in the process of the town, and particularly Alicia. Certainly not an easy process. When we come, we, we ask a lot of questions. We kind of, I like to say we shut the town down for a week when, when we're here.
You like to say that?
Yeah, I do. So I want to thank everybody here at the Town of Littleton for their involvement in the process. It is not something that's easily done. It does take a lot of manpower and a lot of work. So thanks to Alicia and her team and everybody here at the town who was involved in this audit.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any questions, concerns?
Anything from the board?
No.
This is very concise. It was delivered on a very understandable basis.
I do appreciate, I do appreciate this short presentation. I think that's very helpful. I'd like to do that in the future.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Same. Thanks. Appreciate you hanging with us.
Thanks, Alicia. Do you have anything else to add? Are you, you good?
I just want to thank Melanson and the finance team. It was quite an undertaking, and we also had a federal audit this year, too, a single audit done. So that was new for the town because we have a lot of money in COVID and ARPA, and so that takes a lot of time. So I want to thank everyone for that.
Great. Back out and thank you guys because the results speak to the work that you and your team are doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Alicia, maybe just if, if we need to probably relook our financial policies, it's been a while, I think, since we really, you know, looking at these numbers and some of the percentages, we can tweak it one way or the other, maybe to, I think you mentioned a little bit towards that, but.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to be looking to shift a little bit from OPEB towards the pension and bring the liability down. We've gotten OPEB so high, we need...
Yeah, I didn't realize it was so high.
We're going to shift a little bit more towards the pension.
Thank you.
But the financial policy is excellent here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
All right. So I will accuse myself for this discussion. Mr. Wilson?
You have the con. You got the gavel.
What have you done?
Evria is here as well. Evria?
Councilwoman. All right. The next agenda item is discussion of potential approval of the host community agreement to operate a marijuana product manufacturer at 160 Air Road Units 1 and 2. So we do have town council here. This, I, we, I saw the presentation. We were, we were all here, and that's about as far as, I know Mark and I were brought into it. That was the first we saw of it. So I don't know if you have anything to add to this?
I only have that the final version for the board is in your packet. Evria is here to answer your questions.
And I did reach out to Evria as well, just having been involved with literally every previous host community agreement relative to cannabis. So I did have some questions, and she was very responsive, and appreciate that. But I think that the, the host community agreement that's presented before us for the type of business that RM Industries is looking to do, strictly processing, one delivery a day, with 1% per year, without any need for the town to do the accounting of what that impact would be, I think is significant, because that, we have no idea what the cost of us having to do all that accounting would be. So I think it's, it's a win-win. And I appreciate all the time and effort that you and Anthony put into negotiations with the, with the applicant.
So that 1% for how many?
Impact fee for five years.
And that was already negotiated with the...
So it's obviously, it's a determination of this board. So we, Anthony, myself, worked with the applicant to come up with this proposal, but if the select board feels something different is warranted, we can definitely bring that back.
Continue negotiations.
Yeah, continue that. And I did want to note, maybe I was looking at the wrong thing online, but I think there's an outdated version on, on the online version of your packet. Some of the negotiations happened last minute, so I think Anthony was able, before he left, to email it to the board, but I just wanted to make that clear, that we are looking at 1% for five years with a waiver clause.
I think, I think it came across to us each on Friday. Because that's one of the final negotiations.
Exactly, exactly.
No, I think, you know, I really rely on you two a little bit more. This is the first HCA that I've got to look at as a select board member, so.
My only question is how it compares to the other ones.
Right.
Yeah. Well, the 3% is a little different. The 1% for five years as opposed to 3% one year.
So the, for a dispensary, which we negotiated with Littleton Apothecary and with Collective, those, those HEAs were tied to retail sales. There's no retail sale happening here. With G7, where there's really no sales, it's a service, we didn't, we just wanted to make sure they operated within the, you know, the bylaws of the town and that kind of thing. So that, that host community agreement was virtually nonexistent. There's, there's no impact fee that is being collected by the town from, from G7. With the, the cultivation sites, it was more of an upfront monetary impact that was paid to the town, and then that stepped down over the course of five years. With this proposed, the initial HCA that we received had, I think, 3% for the first year to determine what the impact was, and then we had to, we could charge up to 3%, but we had to do the accounting and we had to determine, we had to prove what the impact was, and we had to basically give an accounting to the, the operator in order to get reimbursed for the, the fees that we spent. Whereas this is 1% of their wholesale as reported to the CCC per year without any need for us to track every call from, you know, from DPW for the roads or to the police department or, you know, any calls that are coming into the town hall. So that element of it being removed, I think, has some value to it. If we can get 1% of their wholesale sales, it's called arm's length, I think, is how you get, the language that's used, including if they sell within their own realm, there's still the reporting that goes to CCC and would, would still be paid on that 1% of wholesale.
So I, I think I did see some of the communities that are, were dealing with the 3% and having to go back and that proof, some of the cannabis, I guess, their, their attorneys, they made it pretty difficult to collect that.
Yeah, that's definitely true. So the statutory scheme that was developed when adult use became legal requires municipalities to track all of the impacts associated with these facilities. to track all of the impacts associated with these facilities. And then while it permits us to charge what's called a community impact fee, that fee must be reasonably related to the impacts from the particular facility. So here, right now, I think Chuck said it very eloquently, it's very difficult. There are real impacts from these facilities, but tracking it is a huge burden. So what we are attempting to do with this applicant and what we've done with other applicants here in Littleton is include a provision in the host community agreement that says, look, all the parties recognize how difficult it is. This 1% fee in this case is reasonably related to our impacts, and we're going to recognize that, and we're going to waive our right to sue over it. And there are cases pending, so things can change down the line. But in those communities, a lot of those host community agreements didn't have that particular provision.
So it's a lessons learned.
Lessons learned.
Thank you.
It's pretty, I mean, it makes sense the way it's been crafted. Yeah, exactly. Yep.
All right. Can I answer your question sort of?
It's any further discussion?
No.
All right. So look for a motion.
Moved at the select board vote to approve the host community agreement, HCA, between the town of Littleton and MRM Industries LLC to operate a marijuana product manufacturer at 160 Air Road Units 1 and 2, Littleton, Massachusetts.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We didn't have a whole lot of tough questions, but... No, thank you for the work on that. I know that worked out. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Liz, are they signing it tonight? Is that on the booking or are they...
I just got signed. Do you want this to be on hold?
Sure, Liz, for a minute. You could just hand it in, sign it. I'll be sure of it. This one.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you, Liz. If you don't have Evria's contact information.
You're welcome.
Do you have her contact information? Thank you. Grab Matthew.
Yeah, I guess we can get, where's he at? Hold.
You can sign it for us.
Alexander Haig. I'm in charge.
All right. We will get the chair back in the room. We are really close to done, so. Welcome back.
Are we still a town? We're still a community as a town?
The ship didn't sink, so.
Thank you.
Wilson said I'm in charge now.
Oh, geez. All right.
Welcome back.
All right. I guess we just have minutes to approve, June 13th and June 27th. Anyone have comments on the June 13th minutes? I don't.
I just wanted to make one change to the June 13th minutes and just reference that there's no mention of the chart that I had put together, that the board had reviewed and discussed during that meeting. So I just wanted to see if that could be added into the minutes. And also, Anthony said that he was going to take that chart and circulate it, share it with staff, and see, and come up with a determination of the best way to move forward during the meeting. And that wasn't reflected in the meetings, in the minutes either.
As well.
And that was for the 13th.
And for the 20, sorry, the 27th? Any comments?
You got any comments on that?